No. He's in town.
I'll be, I'll be at the office and now I gotta take off.
I told him I could be on this.
Yeah.
I told him I called my.
Me.
Yeah, it's uh. When you get out of this, I'll call.
Yeah.
He wanted me to be in the property. But I don't.
I didn't want to see you.
Yeah.
If he's got any questions that I can't answer.
Uh.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just talk to Brian. Let's go to Brian as well.
Something like that. There, I need to figure down this line. They're made out of that one. So I'm saying he's on this, on his side. They're trying to basically just lay down. But you see more areas than we're.
They, they do a lot as far as Henderson County. Most guys. They just put in the, the D R six hundred and thirty two. This side on maybe six or seven. Exactly. Smith County. He said, I'm gonna be in the middle of the. And they were turning our G O some of his. And they wanted us all reasons. Said, no, people goes every little kind of city. We obviously thought it really was. He is there when you got, when you got three block. Yes. Eight grand. He's on a little bit of a circle. You got a time.
So you want to sit over here? You want to sit over here?
Oh. I know. I know. I mean, that's just. I think we have the most help coming back.
She can sit here, I just, I was working on.
Come on, say that.
Yeah.
Here, I would just work on Dino's and I'm good stuff down on the way.
That's not hard to make an offer. I, I did some probably, I listen to little connections. Now you're seeing it. So I have a lot of problems with doing so. I'll just get them. On the mountain. What I know. Now I'm doing this last. Consider.
Now there's a good amount of power that came to your eyes. So I used to move from part of the.
You know, I'm going to be on. You know. Three. Yeah. Very well, I have a big. Uh. The other people calling. It's general, it's all for. All times. So. Well. There's.
Not getting that damage. House. Yeah. You know.
Well, you're supposed to.
Here's my thing. I see.
All right, it's ten thirty, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and as we have a thorn present. Uh, of all commissioners here and myself, this is a workshop for Wednesday, April the twenty fourth at ten thirty A M. Is there any public comments? There's no public comments, we will move right on to item number three, discuss all P twenty five radio related topics. Please. Whoever calls.
I'm public works on.
Okay.
Uh, I called it because it may be me, or it may be everybody, I don't know, I'm just a little confused. And just want to get some clarification. Uh. I've talked to my volunteer fire departments over these radios and. In my, and then precinct, um, we got, we, I've got a spreadsheet y'all got. We are, I, I'm still understanding why we're buying so many radios when. I've talked to them personally, and they've told me what they need, and I look at the sheet, that's what's allocated. And we're, we're buying way too many radios for what, what is needed in us. I, that's one question I have, and then. I know we're all confused about the encryption. We keep on talking about that, we've made no decision on that, and uh. And there's some other topics that I don't think we're all on the same page on us, we're trying to get on the same page with it all. But I think we should start with the uh. The number of radios allocated versus what was needed, because I looked at uh. Ben Wheeler, Edgewood, Edom, Midway, Roanoke, Quentin, and Myrtle Springs. So that doesn't include precinct one or the sheriff's department. And by talking to them, they told us what they need. And I was on that sheet for what they needed. And it comes out, we're buying forty two, forty two radios extra at a cost of, you know, ninety six thousand dollars. And if we've already bought them, why can't, this be a court decision? If we're that much higher, how can we can't allocate these radios to some of these entities that are having to pay for it if we've already bought them? When we don't need them for. These uh fire departments that are allocated for. That's my question.
I believe that would be directed to you, Chad.
All right. Well, after you sent this email out, I went back through here to call these chiefs verifying these numbers. What I found out is I was calling and saying, we're short of money, we want to help Edgewood, we need radios. What, what's the bare necessities you have to house, we can help them?
Now, hold on, we never said we were short of money or bare necessities. We always said is what y'all need a fully function.
So.
We never said anything about short of money.
Well, the ones I talked to, that's, that's what they told me now, where they were misunderstanding of the depression they got, I can't vouch for it. I'm just telling what I was told. And so, most of them felt like the whole point of y'all calling and questioning was to help Edgewood. And uh, Fire Department are brotherhood, and if they can strip something back and struggle but help a brother, they will. And a lot of them, that's why you got to answer you got. As I talked to them, like, we ain't gotta give them up, we can use them, we need them, we'd rather not. And then, as you seen, some people had a couple of trucks that now they need a mobile for, and then. I called the chief over at Whitten because that plaque scared me to death, you're talking about one mobile thing, they got five trucks. I know they don't have eight hundred megahertz radios and four other trucks down there. So I'm not sure the details on that, but when I called and talked to that, she said, no, I, I need them numbers exactly the way they are. So when I got done talking to everybody, Ben Wheeler only wants ten handhelds, they need the seven and the base. Edom, they uh said, we'll, 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 we'll take twenty handhelds, and then they uh. Need the mobile and a base. Midway said, not midway, my friends said, we'll give up two handhelds. And that's where I run this sheet and sent back to you where the numbers worked out, where. What Ben Wheeler and Edom gave up covers the mo, the handhelds. Portable radios for Edgewood Fire. And then, if you buy the two new apparatus, the one for Midway and the one for Roanoke that they've added since we pulled these numbers over a year ago. Then you're going to have to get each demo mobile, and then. They're going to be a handheld in each of those trucks. Well, Myrtle Springs giving up two fills that gap. So you're left with what I had here on your numbers for Edgewood, you need to buy six mobiles and a base. And then you need one mobile extra. For our midway and one mobile extra for Roanoke for the trucks they've added. And that's where I, I come to on this.
Well, then we're getting two different stories.
Well. Let me just speak about Quentin. You know, I, I, I'm knowing Chief Fredwell, you, you guys probably known him for, he's been a chief down there for thirty, thirty-five years. He knows what's going on down there, I called him. And I said, look, what can you use? I mean, just tell me what you bear, wha, what you need to run your operations, I, I don't, you know. You need fifteen or whatever, I said, tell me what you need just to run your operations. And he quoted five. Uh. Five mobiles. So. I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, uh, he, he quoted one mobile and six portables. Well, Sarah Beth, now they've given that over to her in the last year and a half or so, she's the chief. So. She called me and says, well, I heard that, that, that. This is what Chief Fredwell said, and of course. I said, Mary Beth, I'll tell you the same thing, what do you need to run your department? I mean, I want to know what you need, I don't want to know how many you want, I want to know what you need to run your department. And she said, well, we could use the, the, the uh. Uh, the uh, six uh portables, and we could use two mobiles. Because they've, they've got six trucks, but. When they have a call, they muster maybe five volunteers. At the most. You know? They may at some point in time have more volunteers, but the people that can get there, most of the time is Sarah Beth, Fredwell, and, and Gary. Is, is the three that come out on those, that's it. So, what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do with eleven portables? When most time you can just muster, uh, at the most, maybe five or six volunteers to get there? It's, it's ridiculous. You know? We've got these extra portable that can go somewhere else.
And this has, I want to make it clear, it has nothing to do with, safety is the number one important thing, we're not trying to jeopardize any safety. We're just trying to get, what do, what can you function at a safety, at a safe level that's functional for your department? That's what I asked, and that's the numbers that I've got, that I, that I got from my precinct.
One thing that I will say about the fire service is when we are allocating stuff, when we're buying trucks, when we're doing this. You prepare for the march. You function with what you can get. But you prepare for the worst. So having the extra ones would be the worst situation, how many times does, uh, does Quentin have a worse situation? I'm not sure. But you got to prepare for the worst, because if you had a, a major event in this county. And they've got five radios, but they needed more because they're out doing reconnaissance, uh, they're checking on people. That's the only input that I would say about what do you need. Okay, and, and if you push yourself back to, to the bare minimum of what you need. You're gonna have an instance that sometimes when the fire department slides, that she will need the max.
That's in life, team.
Huh?
That's in life, that's that sheriff right there.
Yeah.
We can't prepare, Van Zant County doesn't have the, the people or the money.
But you got a situation here where you can cut them back a little bit and help this one a little bit. But they need to, they didn't get to really see thing in their mind is, there's a possibility you need. This, that's, I'm just gonna say it.
Uh, Keith, and I, I. I indulge your comment about the sheriff's office. Sheriff, how many people do you have on shift at a time?
Two, two patrol deputies.
Then you need two radios, they can swap out and shift change, you don't need no more than that.
No, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not what I said.
The point is, if you're looking at bare minimum what this department needs on its average day and its average run, who shows up on an average call. The sheriff on an average day has two patrol deputies. What you're telling that fire department is, you generally have three people show up and run a medical call, you need three radios. But what are you gonna do when that incident comes where it's a structural fire, now they need six? What are you gonna do when now there's two, a grass fire and a structural fire, and everything's out and they need all the radios? The reason I'm relating it to the sheriff is, if you're trying to say bare minimum is what you need on your normal daily operation. Then the sheriff only needs enough radios for people that are on shift at a time. Why aren't we buying one for every deputy? Why? Because you have that day when things get bad and every deputy comes in. It's the same concept with fire, you have that day when they roll everything in their station, and they need to be able to communicate.
Every deputy has to come in because that's their job. This is all up, hey, this is not a, a contest here. All we're trying to do is spend money as thriftily as we can. I called Edgewood, he said, I, I got twenty seven members, but I'm not ever going to get, and he's been through disasters and, and, and all kinds of stuff. He said, I'm not, all twenty seven of my members are never going to show up, they've got other things. So he said, there's no, but need buying me twenty seven portable units. Uh.
He was never originally set up for twenty seven, he just, what he needed, he was ever.
He'd have set up for eighteen, because he probably got some more members, and that, and, and there go, there, let me back up, go back to, to the more units because somebody else has bought one. There we go. That's exactly what I'm talking about, once you open the door and start buying this stuff. It never ends. Now we've said, okay, on day one, we're gonna buy equipment for everything you got, now they've bought new equipment, now they want us to buy them a radio for that new equipment. Here we go, it's never gonna end. You've got to get a hold of it, just a minute, and, and, and Andy's running the two, he'll call him. Uh, you, you've got to get a hold of it and, and on how this is going to work. And we, we want to help everybody, but boys, this money don't, ain't out there on the tree for us to go get.
Okay, I, I would like to get clarification from Chad on the original project, and we did this. For each one of the volunteers that, uh, fire departments, we've got one base station, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, it's a base station for, uh, to the fire station, you'll see Edom has two. Because Edom took over County Lake back at base, so they got two fully function stations.
Okay, so, and then you, you did one mobile for each device that they had, correct?
Each apparatus, each fire truck.
Each, yeah, okay, so each, each fire truck would have a, a mobile in it. And then you based the portable on what?
The function of the apparatus. How many men would be responding apparatus, and you'd need the radios for the job they're doing. And that's where we've done three on a firing, because if you're fighting fire, you have two men inside, one running a pump, that's your typical minimum operation on that. Brush trucks typically two men on that brush truck, and so each of them have radios, so if they've got a. They can communicate on the truck, or they got to get off and, and go hand tools, they've got a radio and communicator. Your rescue, first responder tanker operation's got one radio because it's typically just one person, like a first responder, even if two roles are there together. And it's, it's more of a controlled setting, so there was one radio for each of them.
Okay, so that was the basis on which we determined the number of radios and, and.
The basis was on, if we had a major disaster and they rolled every vehicle they had and they stabbed it, that's what that needed to function. And that's why I, I made that comparison with the sheriff, you know, you, you buy what you need, when you got to have everything in, we do it for him. And that's kind of where, that's where it was going with the fire department, you, you don't base it on, on an average day, I get three people show up at the station or a call, you base it on. An L four tornado just come through, and we're out here all week long. Searching, rescuing, saving people, they've got to be able to take that apparatus out there and have the ability to function with it, and that's where the radio count came.
Okay, that reaction is, is the radio system they have in the trucks now, is that going to be obsolete?
Yes, sir.
That will be, they can't communicate with dispatch anymore after a certain time?
Yes, sir, we're, we're not maintaining both systems from now on, it, it becomes obsolete and everything goes on a new system. They're two totally different frequency levels, there's no way that they can talk across each other on a permanent basis.
Now, that's not, uh, that's not what I'm being told now.
That's, that's not either, right?
Not from the get-go, we're, we're gonna keep all them repeaters up, they can still talk to each other on their trucks. Uh, uh, Van Zant County may not, may not monitor it all the time, but that system will still be up and running.
That's what I.
How, how you gonna talk down to?
What I'm saying is, the eight hundred radio can't talk on a V H L system, the V H F radio can't talk on eight hundred system. We can tie them together at times when we need to, but the problem is.
That's not what he's asking.
The problem is, if you can't talk on the V H system now, how are you gonna talk on it when you try to patch it together later?
He's not talking about passing it together, Chad, I want to know if a guy's got two of them old radios out there, can they talk to each other when this new system comes on? Yes, I've been told they can. If, if they can't, I, I've been told stories. I'm not talking about passing them together, I'm not talking about talking to an eight, an eight hundred system to, to an old system, I'm talking about that old system is still going to be up and running. If. Ben Wheeler Fire Department's got three of them radios in their truck, they can communicate with each other through them three radios.
Well, V H F radios will, on a direct basis, without the repeaters, will do what they've always done. It's a, it's a direct line, single band frequency, they'll do what they've always done. The repeaters are going, the links are going to be dropped off them, so they're not tied together anymore. You could turn to any one repeater and talk them in, but it's not going to be tied in and coming back to dispatch like it does today.
That's right. Don't care about that, but we still talk to each other, they can still talk to each other in that unit through a repeater. To each other if they want to.
They could, but they're going to be on their own talking, they're not going to be communicating with all the other responders. They're just going to be communicating with the ones that's deciding work on that one repeater, and that repeater's not going to work, but in the area it's at. It's not going to be a countywide setup like we got now. And it's going to leave them isolated from everyone else, and they're still going to have the problems of communication that they have today.
So you're saying that, uh, the sheriff's office not, uh, not going to maintain the V H F channel anymore?
No, sir, those will be interop wrote right in the background for when agencies. Come into our county that are on a eight hundred megahertz system, we can have them go to that repeater and then patch it across for that incident. But it's not going to be standing and functioning as it does today, being monitored and utilized. And with us buying Edgewood's radios now. Band does say they're going for, everybody's going to be on the new system, there's no reason to leave the old system functioning and have a dispatcher monitoring it.
And that comes back to this right here, you know, we all got different numbers. I'm not a radio guy. Don't know anything about radios, but I am numbers guy. And if I've talked to the fire chiefs, and they've told me what they need, and out of all this, and this doesn't include. Chad's precinct or the sheriff's department, we ain't got two of those yet. If there's forty two radios, we're talking about this V H F on this system, this system, you take forty two radios difference, we can help Van, we can help South Van Zant, we can help Rose Point. Because we've already purchased the radios, they're there. Why can't we help the other communities out if we don't necessarily need them?
I, I know, that, that's the first thing I've got to know, what has been bought? Have radios been ordered and bought that we're stuck with?
They asked for the preliminary numbers we'd be getting, and I sent what we approved in court on October twenty third, twenty twenty three. That's what I sent over. So that's what they're preparing to prepare for us. Because in court, that's what we approved the purchase back in October.
But we've, we've purchased radios, right? Those are purchased, right, Chad? And we, we bought these radios?
Well, they're not in hand yet, the numbers have been set over for them to build the order, they're not delivered yet. We haven't done the milestone payment on them because they're not here yet. But we've sent them over to let them know that this is what we're looking at getting, because that's what we approved in court back then. And guys, you say bare minimum need.
We never, we never said bare minimum.
No, I'm talking about right now, you're talking about bare minimum need, period said determine what bare minimum is. Me and, and these fire chiefs here are trying to explain to you, bare minimum isn't what you need for your average daily call, bare minimum is what you need. When you're having that bad day and everything's bad, everybody's running everywhere. That, that's what your bare minimum need is, and, and this system's bare minimum, you can ask these guys there, they'd much rather have a radio for every air pack on their fire truck. But to understand, they're probably not going to fill six people on that truck, but three, they're definitely going to have one in structural fire. And, and so there, and you know, that was one of the first things they told me when we discussed, but we'd rather have one for every C, but we understand the three will make this function.
Well, I don't know that you're sweet, I never use the term, and I can't speak for Keith or Virgil or, or you, I never use the term barely need, I use the term fully function. And I think there's a difference.
I think the original purchases that we were told and every part of Joe were buying for. Were told in, uh, the engine, the tanker, the brush truck, and what he had set forth. That would be your functional need. Now, if you talk to them and they interpret what you're saying, and what is your bare minimum? Well, we, you know, we might not ever get to two people on that engine, so you could have one there. And, you know, this and that, but to get back to functional need, I think the functional need was enforced and put in place in the beginning. Now. If you do put this functional need into place, and you need to reallocate some of those radios, sure, there's departments that are the same. Well, you ain't all right, maybe I can give up one, or I can give up two. So you can be able to reallocate to Edgewood from your original deal, and I'm not sure where, um, you're coming up with four or something radios extra. I know you've got your numbers and.
Yeah, I, I, I made a spreadsheet here, and what I did, I took what was on the original, where everybody, what was on the original form. And I called all the fire chiefs, I called Midway, Ben Wheeler, and Edom. Those are three that I called, and I said, what do you need to fully function? And I'll just give you an example, Edom was allocated twenty five. And, uh. I was like, y'all have, he goes, that, we don't need twenty five radios, what do you need to fully function? He goes, we need twelve. I put twelve down, and you add what was allocated and what was needed by every department that we have on here. And it comes down to there was a hundred and three allocated, but only sixty one were needed according to these departments, which is a difference of forty two.
I let them consider it as spares and base.
All, all I told him was to be fully functional, and I never said anything about having to buy Edgewood radios, because we didn't know if we were going to do that. I just said, what do you need to be fully functional? That's the only question I asked, and I don't know about what Keith and Virgil asked.
Mr. Martin, I, I would like to. Fully functional. That's not something that all of your fire department understand. But we can't do that, even if South Van Zant. So when you see you're trying to pull the functional, that's not a good term, because there's an expectation that the house will go fire, so much babies in there. It's expected that I'm going to go in there, and I fully expect that my air pack and my radio, that's my two live setting devices. Because if I get it in there and get in trouble, what can I do without radio?
Right.
And it leaves one, there's three radio, we just fire. And so. That's what we're calling there, that's not really full. And like what, Widdens, their calls, they're not, they're not using, they're not basing their thinking on a structural fire. They're basing that on a grass fire or a medical call. Those radios, that amount of radios will work on that. And I'm not using a tornado as my thinking process, I'm using it as a structural fire, while we protect lives and property. So. That's where my numbers come in, so. I will maybe get clarification on fully pumped, can they operate on twelve? Yes, Edom can. Is it fully functional, and it feel good with everybody? No, it's not. I can tell you right now, Edom needs more than twelve radios. Now, I know that probably what they said.
Yeah, I would say, I, I'm just asking the question, they're giving me an answer.
And I get that. But they're going to get more than that, especially since we work. We work really good, I see it time and time again. And that's where I think, unfortunately, South Van Zant is looking down the road, and we have a plan in place, right? This is already, that's not what we're buying, all those radios, but there's at least a plan in place. And I would like to see what you need, or maybe you can come together, let's talk with them back, then we can come up and do a good number.
And that's, that's why I called them to ask, I, I mean, I was going to strike it at the source, to the chief, and that, and I'm just telling them what they gave me.
I get it.
So, I mean, I, I see your point. But what's the answer?
And when I called him the next day and had more of a conversation like Chief Beverly's talking about. Because I have the same, same background as Chief Beverly, and I can have that level of conversation with him. He's like, well, no, I, I need one radio.
And that's where, I'm not saying that there's, they don't need forty two. But they don't need twelve, twelve, I think twenty to twenty five would probably be their number, yeah. Can they give out a twelve? Yes, but to be more towards fully functional, I would like to see them get around twenty. And if we need to get together and meet, then actually let's go through some stuff. That's fine, because we see it when we do these preparedness reels, that's what the reel is for, to see where you're failing. Number one, change where we do this communication.
And that's why we're having this workshop, I mean, maybe I'm low, maybe Chad's high, maybe we need to be somewhere in the middle, and we still got, uh, we still got radios to allocate to people that need help, so it's a G.
Chief, you seem to be saying though that. That they need twenty and, and seven's going to stay in the desk someplace, just in case, you know, uh, of an emergency, I guess.
So that would be on the apparatus to why they're allocated. There will be three in the engine, there will be two in the brush truck, and there will be one on the tank truck.
Both.
Both.
I was talking about handhelds.
Uh, well, I mean handhelds. Uh, well, I mean handheld, yeah.
Probably need two.
Yeah, handheld, so that they'd just be in the truck automatically?
Yeah, it would be such a, we're not being used, they'd be in the truck, charger, uh, to be used whenever needed. You're not buying radios for whether they're going to go out here and get one and go home with it. You know, that's, that's not what these allocations were for. They were for apparatus, and that was the best basic, um, way that you could figure out what do you need? And you just, you decide three for an engine, our engine holds five, but we're not talking about us. You need three for an engine, you need two for a brush truck, you need one for a tank. And then the front truck and, and the engine are out on a, a situation. Sure, you've got one radio sitting there in your station, it's not even used. But it needs to be where it's available when it's needed, it's not just sitting around uh, on, on the desk, some board B H R, there are apparatus to be used when you need them.
I've been at this role thirty years. Over the years, I've gone to a lot of fire departments, given bids, you know, trying to deal with many counties and what have you. When I go out to go to fire, a lot of theories, whatever. My question is, functionality, all that goes right up, and I go in, I look at the apparatus that you have. And I instruct the fire chief or whoever's in charge, like Jeremy, who's in the sheriff's office, you know, tell me what equipment you have. How many men does it require to have that vehicle in full operation at any given moment? If you're talking four men, you need a mobile radio and four handhelds. Now, does handhelds belong in the truck? That's up to the department, they wanna leave a couple in there, because you may only have one or two people on that truck at a given time. Then, if you have four handhelds, you need at least two backup units, because I can guarantee you, anybody that knows radios, I'm sure the sheriff runs across this all the time, you leave a handheld in the charger twenty-four seven, for two to three weeks, or two to three months at a time, you've taken the duration of that battery's lifetime and shortened it down by half. So eventually you're gonna get to a point where you pick up a radio and the battery don't work, you gotta have a backup and this real works, and everybody's called out. Now that you've got all that figured out, you've got X amount for per truck, we now gotta turn around and take this mind concept that fire departments and police departments are not accustomed to. For the last twenty to thirty years, you go buy a handheld radio to use uh, with the sheriff's department or the fire department, where new volunteers come in for sixty-five dollars, a hundred bucks, two hundred and fifty bucks, and go down to local radio shop and buy one. Under your new system, your volunteers aren't gonna be able to shell out that kind of money. So now you're adding another figure to the amount of equipment that you need to have available in case you have a technical call out. Who's gonna provide those radios? The individual volunteer or the department? If I had to go out and buy one of those new Harris radios today, I couldn't do it. Can't have your volunteers do it? Where they don't get the communication from? That's where your needs come in, that's where your total amount of radios that you gotta come up with, you can figure.
Would not be on account for that.
The BEON works for the firefighters who wanna monitor a home, they can't go have scanners. It's not gonna work in emergency response, they're not gonna be able to have their phone in their bucket years, I don't know, they're gonna have to have a radio for emergency.
What, you said at their home?
The BEON phone out allows us to basically take the radio system and put it in a phone, how like the way they were first met, SO does on your county phone back. So, for firefighters that are wanting to monitor the fire channel, they can have it there to be monitored with. But it's not an emergency response tool, it's, it's a monitor.
I can use my, my phone right now to communicate with Jeremy or any of our other storm spotters or amateur radio operators sitting right here in this room. But one of the first things we tell our people when they find out and we put that app on the phone, this does not work in emergency situations, do not count on it. You've got to have a live two-way radio that you know is dependent. I wouldn't give this to the sheriff and say, hey, go control your neighborhood and depend on this, no way. I give them a two-way radio that I know works. But the phone app is nice if I'm sitting around and I'm listening to the calls coming out over the radio, seeing dispatched. But once I'm active and I go in an emergency situation where I have to respond immediately, and you have a major call out at your department, you can't depend on these to be able to work, because this is a cell phone, it operates off the local cell power. And you're talking one tower within a given area, whereas your two-way radio will under your new system has eight repeaters. Hours, is that correct?
We have five towers.
Five towers, okay.
So what you're saying is that every single fireman or emergency responder has to have a two-way radio, is that what you're saying?
If he is with a department as an official volunteer or a, a, an individual, he should have a handheld, a, a radio of some sort, either available at the station when he comes or at his house, technically, he should have it at his house, because if they dispatch two or three trucks out.
Okay, well, we're gonna talk about having it at the station, everything's gonna be at the station.
Put a repeater for the to tell the head volunteer people that are coming to the station, don't come station, go directly to the scene. We've already got the apparatus out there, we need the people out there now.
See, that's where the BEON app comes in, they can monitor it over here.
Monitor that and see what's going.
And with the radios.
Once they become active though.
Then when they get there, the radios on the truck, they get the radios on the truck and available to use, that's the design. We did not design a handheld for every firefighter, we designed it for the minimal amount for that truck to function, because it would have been way more radios if we had tried to do it like firefighters. That's how we come up with this number, I, I didn't call and go, how many firefighters you got, I called and said, what is your equipment list? And that's how I figured it, so it, it was the bare minimum we could buy, and they'd be fully functional with every apparatus. And there are those days, when you roll everything out of the station, you'd have those times, so that happens. The, we was covering for every firefighter, that's where the BEON app comes in, we have more than a BEON app for every police officer and every firefighter in the county. So that's where they can monitor that response, and they can tell if they need them to direct to another station, get a piece of equipment, or they can do that with BEON. Then when they get to their apparatus, they've got the amount of radios and apparatus it needs to function. That, that's what this whole design was.
But if that BEON goes down, that's depending on cellular operations, then if you're in a situation where the radio system has gone down, how you gonna communicate then?
That's where they're gonna use that base station, when they get to the station, to call out to the crews, what do you need, where you need us, and then respond to there, and then the radios on the apparatus that they need to work with.
Essentially, the same thing for the jail, the sheriff's office, so when they, when I first took this position, uh, Commissioner Pratt and I, we sat down and kind of looked at what the newswork for the sheriff's office, and we cut the radio, brought it back, because initially it looked like they were gonna issue every attention officer with a portable radio, and I'm like, I don't think that's kind of overkill, so we opted to just do a bank of ten radios back in jail that can be changed out as they need. But the deputy is what you're saying, that they, they respond, uh, you know, they hit their car and they're on duty, since, once they get the county line. So if they're gonna have to repeat and swap out a radio, but I think, I know it's different for law peers, but it's a secret kind of thing to do.
And with the sheriff's office, it's pretty much a handheld per phone call, per vehicle, and everybody's assigned a vehicle, so they get a mobile.
Nobody's right or wrong here.
Vehicle has a mobile also, right? Every vehicle's a mobile.
Every fire apparatus has a mobile.
And then every, uh, deputy has a, has a handheld, correct?
On the fire apparatus or on the deputy?
No, on, on.
Some of their, some of their administrative people that don't do a lot of emergency response are using a, in a, enhanced vehicle charger in the vehicle, where they drop their handheld in, and it's got a remote speaker and a remote change setting. And they can utilize that, and when they get there, they grab their handheld, but their patrol frontline people have got a mobile handheld.
So if they didn't run a foot or shoes, they'd have a portable, not that.
Right. And I think the goal here is to not give up safety, we don't wanna do that, we're gonna get the best money for our buck too. And there's gotta be a middle point in there.
Yeah, one of the, the Edgewood chief said, he said, he don't put a radio on everything, he, he's got a bank of them in his station there, because if everything doesn't roll on every fire. So, he said, I, I don't, he said, I can get by with twelve safely, matter of fact, he said, he said, I can get by with ten, I said, I don't want to torture you, let's do twelve, and he said, okay. He's got a bank of them, if it's a house fire, the guys grab the radio and go get on, on the engine if they fire a fire, a fire, house fire with, if it's a grass fire, they grab the radio and go get on the brush truck. Uh, uh, otherwise, what y'all are telling me, when it's a grass fire, you're gonna have an engine sitting back in station with three radios in.
Or maybe not, we've seen times when we had a grass fire and structure fire at the same time.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It happened.
You don't, it don't ever end, Chad, you, 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 we cannot, we cannot cover for every emergency that might come up, and Vance, I can't, we have enough money on the tree, boys.
We're not trying to cover for every emergency, we're trying to make them functional for every apparatus. And we've done the numbers make it functional, the numbers are here, we have the money.
It's, it's functional.
It's, it's here.
There's more ways to scare a cat than one.
And like I said, we met in the middle by not buying firefighter radios or firefighter, we, we have got the equipment where it needed to go.
Y'all are mixing words up here, the thing I did is, if you outfit the trucks with the required amount of radios, no matter what the situation is, you're prepared for it. Now, if you come in and say, okay, well, you got a radio calling one driver, calling one person, and grab the trucks, we only need one radio, we don't need handhelds, everybody else sit in it, you're not prepared for the situation that that truck is designed. But you put the necessary equipment on the truck, again, and if an emergency, a major emergency comes along, you're already prepared for it. So, in essence, what he's saying is, in preparing, we have to prepare for an emergency situation, major call outs, whatever, if the equipment's on the truck as, as should be, we're ready for it.
I understand, Bill, but you also said a while ago, the best way to do it is to have a radio with everybody at home, so if, if y'all wanna take, I, I'm, I'm, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let, let me play, let me play y'all's game. The best way to do it is we should have a radio at everybody's house, so when they get called out, I, I'm just playing the same game y'all are playing.
And that's why I'm telling you, we scaled it down to where we're at now, as to be the most efficient and to take the proper share.
You're, you're jeopardizing safety though, Chad.
But I'm making it functional when they leave that station, when they leave that fire station, they've got what they need to be functional.
It can be functional, if you pick up that radio when you walk out that door too.
And I accounted for that with the BEON system, I've accounted for that to get them to the station. When they get to the station, they got the radios they need to be safe.
I talked about radio at that station, you pick up that radio, go get on the unit that you're getting on, you can be functional if you want to.
Yeah, but you've gotta have enough radios for every unit to operate. You said Edgewood says they grab the radio, jump on the brush trucks and go. What happens if a structure fire comes in, they call out for more people, and they come jump on the engine now to go on the structure fire, and they don't have radios, because the radios are on the brush trucks. In a different place.
Let's buy them all, let's buy them all radios, let's buy them all fire trucks and get on down the road.
This is, uh, what I would like to do is cut some of these radios to furnish Edgewood with, with the radios they need. The, the very amount that they need, if we can cut somewhere along the way with these volunteer fire departments enough to provide Edgewood with the radios they need, that would be a goal.
And I've, I've worked toward that, that goal, Virgil, that's, that's where these departments was willing to give up enough handhelds for Edgewood. Nobody can give up a mobile, they have to have a mobile in their truck, there's, there's not an option to give it up unless they get rid of the truck. So, so we can't get those, but we've got departments that's giving up handhelds to cover Edgewood's need.
Where are you gonna take them from?
Ben Wheeler has given, uh, seven, and Edom has given five, and that's twelve, and that's what Edgewood is requesting.
So does that make what this discussion is all about? Ben Wheeler's giving up seven, well, now do they, are they not? I don't know the term to use, fully functional?
I would agree with you that they're not, but that's what he said.
So now we go back to what Keith is saying, well, we got, we got Edom fully functional, or Edgewood's fully functional, well, Ben Wheeler's not. So now we're back at it, well, we gotta give them back, Ben Wheeler, make it fully functional. So we're making one not fully functional, but the others are to give to Edgewood.
Then we're back to going ahead and buying the radios for Edgewood. And I put the numbers in here, you know, the whole reason of scaling back on the radios is to buy it down and make the service agreement, I've showed how it would change it.
Why can't everybody do what Ben Wheeler did?
I'm assuming that we need to give, because people have different definitions of what's essential, the fully functional or whatnot, that we as a commissioners' court need to decide what each volunteer fire department needs for their, uh, for their fully functional, is that what I'm assuming we need to do?
Because i- if somebody's gotta make the decision.
I would think we would, we've talked to them, obviously, we've got totally different numbers. We need to have a meeting, and pretty quick, and get a number. We, we have to get a number, I think the allocation is too high, and I'll, maybe my need is too low. But there's a middle there.
How many departments are you all buying for? Not including Edgewood.
Not including Edgewood, one, two, three, four, five, six, how many you got, Chad? How many volunteer you got?
Three, four.
I've got one.
Nine, I reckon.
Six.
Seven.
Or seven.
Seven. And then the ones that have to buy radios are South Van Zandt, Van, Will's Point, and that's the S D four in Grand Slade.
Four A S D.
Okay, so you've got seven, and you're needing twelve radios. Uh, there are departments that wanna give up more. So why not just take two radios for each department? To fulfill the twelve that you actually would have to do, two for every.
Well, my thinking was, and this is, this is me, not the court, is not only look at Edgewood, but hey, if we could give, give y'all two, I mean, even though you may have to have ten, if we, if we got enough here to allocate to give y'all two, that saves y'all some money. Or give Vance it, or, or one and one, or whatever, to help y'all out a little bit, that's my thinking. I mean, and that's not the court, that's me.
And gentlemen, originally, back in October, when we approved to buy those radios, it was based on this functionality plan that was what they needed to be functional, and it wasn't a problem, everybody agreed to it, we bought it, it become a problem sometime this week.
No, sir, it came a problem several weeks ago, when, when one fire department said, I don't know why y'all are giving us so many, we ain't got the four members, uh, so, and you're giving us X amount, you're giving it maybe nine radios, and, and we got four members, we don't need that many radio, that's what it came about, Chad, not just this week.
Okay, well, thanks for enlightening me on where it started from, uh, I believe that department's chief is sitting back there. It was his man that said that at that fire chief's meeting.
I don't know what, I don't know what station it was, or, or who said it.
A gentleman from Midway. Who stood up and said, we give his department too many radios.
Well, it came out of me, I mean, I got calls from city managers, fire chiefs, citizens, and they're asking questions that I can't answer. Like, well, you know, we gotta get some answers here. But I, I couldn't answer it, and that's, that's why we're here, I mean, to get some answers and figure out what we wanna do. As I said, I'm, I'm, y'all can talk to VHF, the V U R, whatever, you're way up here with me, I just know the numbers.
Well, it's the difference in whether you get your TV stand over from a TV antenna, or whether you get a dish.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the radio, I mean, I think the radio system's great, but we gotta get our, we gotta do it financially responsibly, and not just, just give money out.
To me, just to me, South Van's in state of the era. I think that you're discussing a whole lot to come up with twelve radios and a base. I think that you're discussing a whole lot to come up with twelve radios and a base. And how many?
Six mobiles.
Six mobiles, six mobiles. So the six mobiles are gonna be your problem. So coming back on some of those handouts. That people will give back will help me buy these mobiles. But I just don't want a, uh, an apartment to. Come back to their everyday use when they need the exceptional use. And if the exceptional use, we let them give back two or three or four. Then that gives you money to buy a mobile with. When you're already gonna have probably enough departments to give back to regret to get their equipment. Is that right? I mean, that seems feasible to me, but I I'm not saying consider South Van Sand Indians.
Right.
I mean, we have, we have placed our. And, uh. Not to tell you that it wouldn't be right if you gave us some, but we cover our statements.
And and gentlemen, keep in mind too, the reason we're buying these radios is we know these departments can't buy them, so. And that's the reason we're doing it. If we, if we cut back and don't give them enough. And a year from now, they realize they ain't got enough. We got a problem. And that's another thing that they watch for. The gentleman stood up and said at that meeting. I'm not sure how long he's been a firefighter, but he's not a chief. And I realize it it gives reason for concern. It gives reason to relook at it. But it's one firefighter or one department's opinion.
Well, no, no, it's, it's. It's every one of them I talked to yesterday. Said, said they could do less on the. On their, on their portals.
I, uh. But off of my time, my experience in the background, it'll help with Chad. I would be more than willing to take on the one that talk with each of those departments. With my experience, I mean, having to sit down and figure out exactly what those chiefs are, who's ever in charge of their deal. And figuring out what they really need. If that makes any better for y'all to understand. We've got somebody that knows what's really needed and what's not.
We we need to identify the person in charge of each one of these and talk with them as a commissioner court or representative. To get, uh, and get them to sign off on it. And that way we have it. So we don't have people that, uh. That are popping off, uh, statements that they don't really have the authority to make the statements. Their opinions are not in in control. Another question I have, Chad, is, is it necessary that every fire station have a controlled station? If if nobody's at the fire station. Why, why is a a mobile station required?
Each of these fire stations serve their communities also as emergency operations centers. Therefore, they need access to the radio system to communicate. And work as an emergency operations center event. It also allows your firefighters, when they get to the station and the trucks are gone, to call. And and see what's needed. Get assigned. It allows, some departments will actually set someone there just to man the radio during the call and then they'll pull out. Uh, right now, every station after has a base station in it. Uh, ever, ever main operational station, like has a base station in it.
I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate here, Chad. He just said they have somebody sitting at the station monitoring calls.
No, it's that some departments when a call's going on, we have someone at the station that can answer the radio problem. Not all of them do it. They don't do it every call. Some of them do.
Why, why couldn't a portable do that? I mean, I, I'm, maybe that's a dumb question. I don't know. But why would you have to have a controlled station to do that? Just having a portable talking to everybody when they're out there?
It, it sounds like you, you've got a dispatch center at the sheriff's office and you got a dispatch center at each. Uh, fire station.
No, sir. It's not a dispatch center. It's just an emergency operations center where when something happens in that area. You got a station, set a command station up at operating, running things.
So why couldn't, uh, why couldn't, why couldn't a portable radio? He, he's sitting there in the fire station in his office, listening, listening to what's going on on the radio. How can he do that with the radio? Why would he have to have a control station?
And honestly, in theory. If there was a portable there with this new system that talks from inside the structures, it should work without all the towers dropping functions. Now, if you was to drop a tower, then you would need that external antenna and that extra power off that mobile to hit the next available tower.
The control station.
It's half the price.
Is eight thousand dollars.
The mind raising we can do that. All the portables on the trucks.
You'd have to, you'd have to allocate an extra portable instead of a base.
Fifty-four hundred for the control stations. Hundred and six hundred for the incident.
I would rather do that, I mean, that one. If they know they're not gonna be, that they can use a portable.
Fifty-five hundred and twenty-six hundred. Fifty-five hundred for the control station, twenty-seven hundred to install it.
Install forty-five minutes, then that's twenty-six hundred off.
Well, and then you do have, you do have, uh, the portables that are, are not fire resistant. That would not have to be in that station.
Your control station or base station. If the main repeater system or your repeater in that area goes down, it gives you the ability to have direct communications by means of an outside antenna. Go to that station. You can now communicate with your people, should communicate with all your people in that one area. A handheld won't do that. If you're sitting inside of a building, a handheld will not give you that kind of coverage.
Well, why not? Because it's supposed to be ninety-eight percent coverage.
They're talking about a radio of a tower that's not there.
A handheld is at an eight hundred megahertz frequency of anywhere from about three watts, eight watts, you know, in that area where your control station is. Twenty-five to fifty watts, big ones, as far as being able to cover distance. And also the other side of that coin is to receive. If I'm sitting inside, like right here, right now. There's places in this building, like even on your high band system, sheriff's running right now, and I can hear this dispatch. I moved over this far and I can't hear a thought. Whereas, uh, with a control station in that, you know, outside, I'd be more than happy to to bring equipment down here.
Yeah, that's, that just didn't make any sense to me because we bought this radio system to be fully functional coverage.
It is fully functional coverage, but if you, you have to, you have to always. Plan what the man say, hold up, expect the worst. You could have a repeater system or two and you're given area that your operating complex could go down. Generator out, fuel transmitter burned up, RF active fire went out. These guys got to be able to, be able to revert to something else. And that's what the control station gives you is that final backup, be able to do that. Does that make sense, Sam?
It's, it's a little bit clear.
If they're at the station, it does. But if they're out in the field, it doesn't.
Whereas your units out there in the field, if they're out there in a plant fire, a structural fire or whatever. The main repeater system goes down to that area, they can still switch over to a direct channel and talk back to.
Hostage.
The fire station. Right?
Chad, was you having?
I did, uh. Depending on a handheld to do what y'all were talking about. Your ninety-eight percent coverage is pie in the sky.
Yep.
Okay. They're selling you. That's what they're saying. That's not what's gonna happen in the real world. If we have, and and like I say, I'm, I'm speaking South Van Sand's government ourselves. We're okay. But if we have a situation down on eighteen sixty-one. There's a spot down there that if I had a handheld out here at station four. And we had a fire three incident, which we've had a pity of them down there because of water trucks that run that road a lot. And there's a big old curve. And that curve most take out the old tank. We had somebody up here at station four. What do y'all need? Bring it out. What can we do? Can you hear me? On a handheld in a building up here that ain't gonna happen. Now, if they get in a truck and they pull out and start that way, it is gonna happen, probably. It's gonna happen truck to truck. I still not gonna be guaranteed until I see it that it'll do handheld outside. To that spot in our county. And that's an area, even though they're putting a tower over in over there. There's a big old hill over there. It's called Big Rock. Which prevents in that curve, in that position I'm talking about, there's homes there. Uh, we got an issue back there that we go into all the time, medical call. They're blocked. Now, y'all are trumpeting with these towers to make that point where it doesn't happen. And I will praise y'all and thank you very much when it does. I'm not gonna criticize them at all because that's my expectation. But, but this conversation of putting a handheld in, in place of a base unit in a, in a building. Don't expect it to happen to work. This is a simple, it. Hundred percent better. Cause we, we never get a top over there. And I'm hoping we can. But we, we're getting the chance to be able to a whole lot more than corporate now. We don't want to do that now. We gotta. We don't want to sacrifice. We just have to get the truck going over there and by the time we get over Big Rock or back on eighteen sixty-one. Uh, then we can talk to the guys that are on the scene. Well, we should do it wrong this road.
But I think to wrap this one up on this subject, I think we need to talk to all the fire chiefs, which I know we have. But we need to just have a meeting with them and we need to get a number and we can get that figured out. And I mean, that's my opinion. Cause I, it's not gonna get solved today, but we know how to solve it. But we gotta, the thing needs to be done pretty quick.
Yes, we're totally trying to solve it down to furniture.
That's one thing. That's one, that's one objective. Yeah.
Yeah. And is there any other radios? That will be extra that we could allocate maybe somewhere else? Just to save some money. I mean, not say, you're not, we're not saving any money. But we're not, uh.
Great charity.
Yeah, that's basically what we're doing.
So would Chad, you and Brandon be willing to get meet individually with each one of these fire departments and get them to know what it is?
Yeah.
They, they consider the minimum necessary requirement?
I'll be glad to, but I hate all the more. They talk to both of us. I'll be glad to have another meeting.
Okay, hope y'all coordinate that, get it done and just get something in writing. You know, this is how many we, we want and have it signed. And that way we can come back. When we come back, we're not arguing about, uh, what it is that they need. All right, Tim, can, are y'all gonna have a base station in every, uh, fire station? Ever, everyone y'all have? Is it gonna be planned to somebody to monitor that?
Not every station, but. We've been hit before by having big incidents and not having a dispatcher that can, is monitoring us. So for our safety, we try to put somebody at the station at one of them that monitors our big incident. And it's just the safety thing for a truck to fire. Maybe they hear someone calling for help if there was something you would have to do on the side of the yard. That's us. That's it. Once the, the big emergency's over, I pull everybody back and then pull them very late for five to six hours.
Tim? One more. I mean, this, this agenda says discuss all frequently vibrating red and towels. I actually myself personally want to come back to one topic, uh, and ask the court is working on this contract. Uh, to get, to guarantee that fifteen years there will be no far effect on our personal.
Uh, well, I have approached the district attorney about what we can do to do that. And it appears to be that, uh, you cannot commit that far in advance. We don't have the exact terminology or language that, that, that prevents us from doing that. Uh, we can basically do it in like five year increments. So. We are waiting on, uh, legal, uh, uh, an analysis and interpretation on what we can do. To make it to policy to that commitment. But yes, we are working. Okay? The, I, our idea was to come back with a contract for fifteen years, but we don't know that we can do that. So.
Well, Tim, what I've found out about it, even, even with a contract. Uh, what I've researched on it. Every, every silly thinking one of them thing, the last line says either party can avoid this the next amount of days. And, and I don't like that. I, I, I want to try to figure out. The reason why is because fifteen, what, so I'm not worried about fifteen years from now. I'm worried about ten years from now and all of a sudden. There's a whole group, this whole room, different people in there. And, and the ones on this side of that bench and saying, well, we got to charge you guys on that side of the beach. I'm trying to figure out a way where that don't happen.
That's why, that's why my main concern is, is, and I've always said, there will be a whole other court someday.
Yes, sir.
And their minds did not be focused on us.
Yes, yes, sir. And so I. Uh, I just hope we can figure out a noble way to do it, you know, where everybody. The biggest thing is to keep it alive, you know, uh, uh, when. When I'm not here, I let the next people coming in say, hey, don't forget, you know, we, we promised them guys they wouldn't be charged for fifteen years. Keep that. That upfront all the time. And when you leave, say, hey, let's remember, you know, keep them guys up there aware that, that. Of what we went through in twenty twenty-four, that we. Because I certainly don't want that to happen to y'all.
So, Lonnie, did you have something that you wanted to say about an hour ago? Okay, I just, I was only sure if you had something to say. But the other thing that I still cannot wrap my. Uh, wrap around is, is the fact that we want to keep the, the VHS system up and running. Because I don't, I, I don't comprehend why we want to do that, but. Uh, I believe we can. We can have it done, but it won't be on, it won't be on dispatch side. And you won't, the, the traffic there will be totally separated from what's on our current system.
You've got to keep that V H system up and running. Or your worst case situation here, when you bring out of, out of county people in that are on that system. If it's not, if them repeaters are not up and running, you're not gonna be able to talk to that. Uh, uh, Cook County, whatever county it is, is still on that system and they come in here to help you. If that side of it's not up and running, then they're, they're dead in the water.
And to that extent, the repeaters will be running in the background in that mode. To where we can't utilize it that way. They're just not gonna be utilized as they are now with their, the main dispatch.
That's not what I'm talking about. If they're up and running, that fire station can use it. If they want to use that for their, if they don't have enough radios. On this other band and they want to communicate with each other on that radio. I'm not talking about back to dispatch. I'm talking about for their private use. Let them use it. It's gonna be there for them to use it.
On any radio, a major radio system, change over like going from. Hundred and fifty megahertz to eight hundred megahertz, like you do something like that. You want to make sure that the existing system is still operation for at least three to six months. Until you, you know for a fact that the eight hundred system is working like it's supposed to. I mean, you go talk to Cedar Creek, you go talk to Harris County, Smith County went through that when they switched over to eight hundred. They instantly said, we're turning off the VHF system. We're not gonna be using it. Well, they put it all in and a lot of those departments pulled that radio equipment out. They couldn't get those radios working right for six to eight months. Before they got it up. I talked to a man over Cedar Creek last month. He said, we've had our radios for a little longer, three or four months now, and they still can't get them running back.
And with ours, all we gotta do is turn the link radio off. And so when that time comes, we turn the link radio off, repeater just sets out a background. We'll have all the stuff programmed on the gateways to work efficiently at that time.
There again, you've got this information going out. Several people have asked me, they even call me on the phone. It's our understanding. When the county goes eight hundred, we're gonna instantly turn the high band system off. We're not gonna have communication. It's like, well, it's your department. You own those VHF radios. It's up to you to keep them up. They, they don't. You don't have to take them out of your vehicle. They're still there for all.
They're gonna keep it up. We're, we're, we're cutting ourselves off from any outside hill.
And that, that's, that's a lot of the problems with the vol- volunteer fire departments. They're, they're afraid you're gonna get shut off from communicating.
A lot of them are.
That's just, I don't want to scare them.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, and that's, that's why we're buying the radio. And that's, that's why we're buying the radios. So have the ability to communicate. And that's why it's important to get on the appropriate amount of radio. If, if you start trying to have a fire department run this many vehicles on the new system and that being on the old system, you're setting up for somebody to be hurt.
Yeah.
You're setting up for somebody to get hurt.
Our radio is our, we need dual bands.
Single band.
Single band. We bought twelve, their dual band work.
And same, we, we, we've let you waste your money. We don't keep that side up and running.
Well, we, we, yes, sir. We've also got our own V H F channel too.
And, and we plan to keep the repeaters running, just not linked together and not operating as dispatch channels. So they'll be standalone, interoperability repeater. And if they wanted to talk on their repeaters for the general business, anybody could. It's an open frequency. It's just there to use. The problem is like, if they try to use it for emergency response in county, if, if we got fire departments are saying, well, just give me a couple of the new ones on standalone system. And you got another department that's bought all new system, they're not gonna be able to talk. That's gonna be a problem. And then. You're gonna get in trouble. That's why we're buying on the radios. We gotta buy enough radios.
Yeah, the producer is a problem. You got a lot of the different departments that the volunteers are saying, we go to the eight hundred system. I can't afford that radio. They shut the high man system off. I didn't know communication. And that's, that's where a lot of the deal is, we're being shut down.
Well, if you're referring to firefighters that bought their interviews or radios and put in their truck.
Yes.
That's where the beyond comes in at.
Yeah. They're not understanding. Really need somebody to go around and spend some time with each department and educate them on what, how to, where it's. How it's laid out, what they'll have, what they won't have, and really understand what equipment they need. And that's been one of the biggest houses over the years without our own houses. I've made too many so much radios because I went into a department, sat down and said, okay, it's time to educate. Number one, straight up, uh, those educated first. And then you sit down and turn what you. Now, mentioning everything, the tanking P twenty-five, you brought a twenty-six hundred dollar installation fee or you all locked it in? That is, is that a lock-in price?
They clearly are fifty-four hundred.
Station doesn't take more than an hour and a half, two hours tops, twenty-six hundred bucks, I'll take that and I'll take on, I'll give all of your station. Serious. I mean, you would have been buying radios for other departments. Look at that installation fee and, uh. So you can't say, honey, they're live doors and they're those over.
Does that lock in wrong skill?
If we choose to purchase it and have, if we choose to have them install it, it is a lock-in price. But we don't have to have them install.
Fire station.
Sir.
Senator.
But y'all will talk about the big E word? Y'all know what the big E word is?
What's that?
In encryption.
Well, I, I.
That's just a G in it, so.
I'll tell you, uh, my biggest concern, I was telling Sheriff Carter a while ago, is Canton. PD is not going to be encrypted, encrypted. The radios are not capable of it and they're not gonna pay for it. And I don't blame them. I wouldn't either. I don't want Van Zant County to lose the ability of those policemen in Canton, Texas, monitoring our dispatching. And then hear something that's going on and then be a half a mile away from it and be able to take that call. Versus waiting on a sheriff's officer to get to you. And so that's, that's why I've said all along, encrypt everything you wanna encrypt, but don't encrypt that main dispatch. Channel so that Canton can hear what's going on. Chad says there's a workaround around that where that, they can't do that. Not their, not Canton dispatch. I, I want the guy in the car to be able to hear. What's going on? So he can, the Canton PD can help us. And they do. They, they help us a lot and not just Canton. All the, all the cities help us in call and, and be thankful that they do because our. Two or three, if we're very lucky, four deputies on duty for the whole county. Uh, we can't, we can't get there when we need to get there. So I don't wanna lose that help. Uh, but Chad has assured me that there's a workaround on that. Uh, to where they can do something, uh, through that computer system where Canton, the mobile unit in Canton will hear the dispatch.
I had a meeting set up with Chief Allison, but for Monday morning, but he has something come up later, so we're gonna try to follow up with it. To where the officer in the car or on the street will be able to hear our dispatch. Uh, that's the end goal. I'm working toward when I sit down with.
So will you be dispatching over an encrypted channel?
That's what the sheriff has asked to do. And so that's why I'm working on setting something up where Canton will be able to hear that dispatch. My first thought on that is the beyond system for their officers, they could set and monitor us all day long.
Do you mind the thinking on encryption? That most departments that I had over the last, since I came out with the encryption back in the early set. Two reasons for it. One. Law requires that the criminal history information. Or, uh, mental, mental health, life information. Be protected from the general public. Two. You don't want your people knowing what you're doing out there. Claiming something you're hiding here. There is no need for full-time twenty-four seven encryption on any radio. Police department, sheriff's office, fire department, I don't care who it is, there's no need. And if you really wanna get still a lot started, you got more than you'll ever imagine. The amount of people in this county, as in every county. That has a scanner, has a radio, has a broadcast device on their computers upon them, that sit and listen to your chats. And what's going on? That's how they stay informed. You got your news people that have monitors. Just turn that encryption on. Nobody knows what's going on anymore. Then they start to look conspiracy theories. There's no need for encryption twenty-four seven.
So we don't encrypt because we were worried about, uh, uh, conspiracy theory?
You don't encrypt. Because it's not necessary.
That it's not necessary.
If you're being encrypted twenty-four seven.
Is there, what, what other, what current counties?
Because.
Encrypted. I have an encrypted channel for their law enforcement.
Well, current counties don't have encryption.
Do, do have encryption.
Well, most counties have encryption available where they can turn it on. Uh, uncounted for the last thirty years is that encryption that they turn it on when they need it. They switch to a different channel and they, and you could, you would hear it's digital now, but you wouldn't hear the conversation.
But that won't happen if they don't have encrypted, if they don't have, uh, radios.
I'm not saying don't put encryption on the radios. What I'm saying is don't encrypt the radios twenty-four seven.
Right. Well, we have, again, as long as the radios have encryption capability, we can turn encryption on and off anytime we want.
As needed, right.
Correct. We don't necessarily have to have it on.
That's correct.
Okay.
But you just get through talking about their dispatching and encryption, so. It's gonna be on.
That's right. That's what.
But we have the option to turn it off if we want to.
Well, you got to leave it off all the time. People tend to hear.
Yeah.
That's a function on the console. There's one button on the console I can encrypt or, or turn it off. That's, that's not a big deal. Same in the car. Just a matter of whether which function switch you push is that activated. Question is, Sheriff, do you really need full-time encryption twenty-four seven?
You ask me?
Me?
Yes, I would do.
You believe you do? Why? Harris County, Dallas County doesn't do it.
Yes, my opinion.
Yes. And I'm asking why? Why would you feel that you?
The sheriff would. Well, you got, you got some of them already have it. It's because of the, uh. Information about.
Certain information, yes.
Certain information that, that it gives.
Then you turn it on.
Yeah. You turn it on and you turn to an encrypted channel, channel would be more likely what you should do.
But if you're.
If you're just dispatch.
Full-time encrypted, you can't communicate with Canton.
Well, that's why I'm working with them on ensuring that they will be able to, to hear our stuff and we can always patch and cross and all that. For the, we're working on getting where they can hear our stuff and, you know, be readily available.
And, and I, and me, me personally, it's, and, and I won't have no hard feelings if it don't go my way. But I'm not talking about on their cell phone or, or that D N. I'm talking about on their radio. They need. If we, if, let's get it clear. If Van Zant County wants the city of Canton to help us. Then we gotta get it where they can hear us on their radios. If Van Zant County don't want their help, if, if y'all say, hey, we don't want that, we don't want Canton to help us. I don't have no problem with it. But if we want Canton's help, we gotta get it where they can hear us.
Like I said, I'm, I'm trying to arrange a meeting with Chief Allison, find out what all they have on their side so we can, we can work this out.
And it's not just we want their help. They, if they can get onto our system, we can help them. Get to areas that they just probably can't get to right now with their system. So.
Well, I agree with that, but they, they help us a whole lot more than we helped them.
Understand.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna lose if they lose our help. But I guarantee the citizens of Van Zant County are gonna suffer. If we lose Canton, Wells Point, Ransley, any of this, but if we lose their help on police department, we are gonna suffer. The county is gonna suffer.
And if you have any other agencies come in here on an emergency situation from other counties like back in twenty seventeen where you had. Rollad and Garland and a couple others sent their vehicles out here. They don't have encryption on their own system. What, what method can be set up for that?
We're designing the interop system to account for that. Also, the interop system to account with the neighboring counties. We're working all that up through it. That's the great thing about our, our gateway devices. They cover the encryption. But they apply it where needed and move it where not. So we're working all that through our interop sources. And they, they have all been considered.
Well.
And, and I.
Well, I just wanna make sure that these fire departments. Will be able to talk among themselves. If there's. Four, if there's Whitten, South Van Zant, Ben Wheeler, you know, all together, they need to be able to, to communicate with each other. And I'm not sure encryption is gonna work with them. It just, you know.
The encryption will not stop them from talking to each other because all their radios are encryption capable. So South Van Zant wants their stuff encrypted, operate them encrypted. Whitten don't, Whitten goes, well, when they turn to South Van Zant's chain channel, the radio's gonna work. It's gonna talk to them everything because we've purchased all the radios with the capability.
So all the radios that we've got are, have encryption capabilities or?
Yes.
Everything is with the exception of city Canton and your, your outside help, if you bring it in there or not.
Like I said, outside help, we're working, we're remedying that through our interop options.
Well, you can, you can communicate with them. You can go through your options to reach out to them that are not encrypted. To that particular unit, but it's the same way. If that unit's not encrypted and he comes in here and you're dispatching, he is not gonna hear the dispatching. Of that, of, of what's going on in that unit. Now, yes, you can go through your, your techniques and call that unit and that unit can talk back to dispatch. But as far as that guy sitting there and listening to everything that's been dispatched, he ain't gonna hear it.
No, actually, when we bring him across, the method will have him functional on the talk group he's working on. Here and transmitting everything with everybody who needs to communicate for that incident. That's the way we've designed the system for that situation, when considered.
I, I, I do believe that you don't need encryption to dispatch. The sheriff office out to an accidental interstate coin. I do, however, if you've got an aggravated robbery in progress, I think you already switch it over to encryption and dispatch. There. So, you know, the use of encryption all the time is just not necessary. I don't.
And that's the, this is a, a vertical, this is a deal that can change anytime. Uh, we, we have, we have all agreed to buy. Encrypted radios. That's, yes, encrypted capability. And, and that's a done deal now with the supplying Ed Wood's, Ed Wood Fire Department with their radios. There's, everybody's gonna have it. Every E S D's ordering it. And so the capability will be there as far as that, as far as that dispatch and encrypted, actually. That could change and every time you try and share ideas, you know? So that's.
Well, you put the, you order the equipment with the board in it for the encryption and then in the program scheme, you select whether you want encryption to be on all the time or to be active. Under such conditions. So that's the thing about encryption. I'm not saying anybody, anywhere, because I use encryption in my own stuff. Uh, I'm not saying don't do the encryption. All I'm saying is encryption twenty-four seven. Whether it's fire agency, law enforcement agency, or even your permission for. On your chance, it's not necessary twenty-four seven. It's, it, it really isn't. And it causes a lot of confusions and it can actually go down in the, right middle of the conversation, emergency situation and cause some real problems. And it has happened over the years. Just another function and another ability of the radio that goes south.
I, I agree with you, Bill. But I don't know, I, I, I don't believe it's, uh. This court can give their opinion, but when it comes down to the. To, to just like the sheriff wanting to let some of his people off on admin time. It ain't gonna be our call. It's gonna be his call. Now, now, I think it's gonna be the.
Derek coming in will be the same way or y'all?
I think it's gonna be the call of all the volunteer fire departments and the E S Ds to come together to see if they wanna be on a dispatch on a. Encrypted channel or not. That's gonna be, and, and I believe Van Zant County will. Will go along with whatever the, with whatever the fire departments want. With, as long as we've got the capability in radio, we can switch it back and forth. They can try it one way and then switch it back to another way if they don't want.
And Sheriff, please understand, it has something to do with the new purpose. That's even back when I was with Dallas County Sheriff's Office, I said. A lot of identities, we need encryption, we need encryption things. Like, I had a lot of identities that was upset and he goes, it's like, no, you don't. And it was just a new, new thing at the time. It caused more problems on a lot of channels, you know? I mean, if encryption was that big of a deal, then I would say go up to Dallas and find out why they're not. Whether it be Dallas County, Dallas P D, especially Dallas P D with as many units that they got and what they got going on with the time, or even Harris County and so forth.
Well, then Christian, they have developed the technology now. It's not causing problems with the radio itself. That's all been worked out.
I understand that.
But that's not the issue.
For twenty years, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not the radio problems itself it's caused. It's the problems that are caused by the individuals out there that.
And that's where having every radio being multi-key capable resolve the issue of this guy tried to get on the encryption channel, couldn't talk. He didn't have, wouldn't have a problem. All the radios are capable, so they'll talk on that. And there are neighboring counties, for your complement, Harrison, they've got encryption on their, on theirs. They're, they got the capability. Hunt County built a, they're built a similar system to hire the capability on it.
Anyway, I think this loss has been deep, very hard.
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna continue to work on the issue of Canton.
Okay. Me and Chad will be with the fire chiefs on radios.
And please, you know, everybody, each, each division, you know, so we just make sure we're communicating fairly. All right. Uh, it is eleven. Uh, it is eleven fifty-five and that's, I'm going to pause meeting close if, uh, there's no objections. All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm in the seat and I'm available if y'all need me any further.
Thank you.
Good day.
That's, that's, that's.
This is made in a home unit. But.
Not from the office.
Wonder which house we had to find. So that thirty thousand persons since the end of two.